We'll open our study session tonight for the Shelton City Council. Could we rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I will turn it over to City Manager Knighton to start us off.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have been discussing for quite a while the potential change from the council work session structure that we have now and that we're using tonight is, in fact, in a potential change to a subcommittee structure or a committee structure. And this is only for the internal committees that we are discussing. We'll have another discussion on January 7th about council assigned committees to things like the MTA Board, the Transit Board, and things like that at that time. But the council had asked staff to analyze and outline potential alternatives to the various organizational structures that facilitate the flow of information between and among the Shelton City Council and the Shelton City staff. And what we've done is looked at the positives and negatives of both types. There is a subcommittee structure type that various cities around the state use. And how we evaluated this was by using four different committees. One would be the Finance and Budget Committee. And these would be standing. So they would meet either monthly or quarterly, depending on the work program of the committee involved. We have Finance and Budget Committee, Community and Economic Development Committee. We would have a Public Safety Committee, and we would have a Public Works and Environment Committee. Each of those committees would, some of the positives of that type of structure would be committee members have an opportunity to have a more in-depth study of specific details relating to agenda items. Council members have the opportunity to guide the project direction early in the process. And council members have more opportunity to receive updates on current projects. Some of the downsides to that is, and it's happened in several cities, that the news articles are relatively easy to locate, potential to create division among council members. So, you know, various committee assignments, depending on what your interests are, individual council members may not be able to be appointed to that particular committee. Difficulty building full council direction, there tends to be not substantially more, but some additional log-rolling when we get to a actual council meeting like we are, we'll have a little bit later this evening. Generally slower. It slows down the process quite a bit for projects because of the various approvals that need to go through and attempt to get the committees scheduled on certain dates and those types of things. And city staff's workload goes up quite a bit because you're preparing things for the subcommittee and then preparing them again for full council consideration. And that can go back and forth several times. So the other structure is the one like we're using tonight and the one we've been using over the previous year. And that is a work session type where all councilors sit and have a discussion with city staff on various issues. One of the major ones that we did this year that I'm sure you all remember is the Master Fee Schedule, where we did three separate work sessions with the full council to go over various aspects of the development of our new Master Fee Schedule that was adopted in July of this year. So the one, several of the positive aspects of that type are work sessions are held in council chambers, typically immediately prior to the regular council meeting like we have tonight. There's debate available among council members, or the opportunity to debate among council members about the best direction. There is a decrease in staff time and a decrease from the other type of structure, not just a general overall decrease. And we can answer questions in an open format like we have here this evening. One downside is there are fewer opportunities for city council to review the specific details of a project before it comes to council. But I think that's mitigated somewhat by the council briefings that we all hold a week prior to council meetings. But that is one downside. The last positive I wanted to mention was transparency. With these types of hearings, we're open and available to the public to attend, which committees would be as well, but they're typically scheduled at different times and not always available to the public, although we can make that work if that's the direction the council would like to go. And we're broadcast on television, or on Mason Web TV and other outlets, for the public to be able to view council deliberation and direction. With that, that's what we have written up. Be happy to answer any questions, or if there's any direction from council to staff, either one of these methods work. They both facilitate the flow of information, and city staff can make either one work to accommodate whatever council's desires are. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jeff. Time for discussion. I know we've kind of had one committee this year, we had the Budget Committee, which was a test, or kind of a test case. We can have comments on that, or comments on what you're feeling on this.
I liked how we were, Joe informed me as the budget was going on, you know, the different things. But that took extra time. And so I really liked this format, because we're not doing more meetings than necessary.
Well, I think that when the people voted for the council, they voted for transparency. And I think putting three of us under a quorum in a committee is not as transparent as they probably wanted. And I think it works now. I think we should probably just keep it the way it is. And frankly, I kind of felt left out of the budget process this year.
That's my response.
Well, since I'm leaving, I'm looking forward to it. I always bring that up. I thought about this. I really didn't care too much, but then, the more I thought about it, one thing I think it would work a lot better in larger cities, I mean, like Seattle, I mean, obviously, I'm sure they got some subgroups, you know what I'm saying? But I think Shelton, coming from a three-person commission to like, what is it, seven people now, seven people council, you know, the people vote us in to make these decisions. And let's look at it this way, like, okay, let's say Bob and I are, and Joe are on a little committee, and we're rambling, we're doing this. Well, let's say Kevin and Eric have great ideas. It's a lot better to give them the beginning than it is after, you kind of got a report and says, hey, we really think we should go this way, guys, or what. To me, I think I would lean towards transparency is right here in front of those cameras with all seven people, because, and that the ideas, the creative ideas of each individual gets into it in the beginning, not later on. I always felt in years past on budget things where it was kind of like, back then, the treasurer, and then the staff would come up with the budget things. And it's kind of hard to turn that stuff around, you know, after it's, you know, once you start the ball rolling in a certain direction, it's sometimes a little harder to say, what is it, what about this idea? It might have been a great idea. Those ideas need to be, I think, more towards the beginning. So I won't be here to do it, but I would probably say I would rather not have the, and the other deal, too, is individual small groups can develop their own thing. And then when it comes down, it can be a little contentious to say, well, we like all this time you did this, but no can do. So the no can do is just a little embarrassing sometimes, so I think that's probably my ramble on it.
That's Member Schmidt, or?
Did you, did you know what we're talking about now?
Yes, I do. Apologies for my tardiness.
I figure you would. Or, I'm just remember Dorsey.
Are you ready? Well, I kind of like the, I like the way we do it now, especially, especially if the other process is slower, and it makes double the work for the staff. I'm not all for making more work for all you guys. That's, I don't like that idea much at all. So I would lean toward meeting in our little staff briefing, just like we have been, and I'm comfortable there. I kind of like it. That's just my thought.
So to address the transparency step, regardless of whether we have a quorum or not, everything that we do and pretty much every decision that we make and every discussion we have is public record. And I would argue that any of the subcommittee meetings that we had related to budget, that any of that information was not transparent, I'll say. You know, everything that we went through in that process. So I don't want to paint a picture that one process is less transparent. I actually disagree with that. I don't want to paint that picture, that one side of, like, committee work being less transparent than meeting as a whole. What I can say, though, is that in some of that committee discussion, because it is a little less formal, the conversations are, we can be a little bit more frank with conversations, we can be a little bit more direct and to the point, we can, we're a little bit more comfortable thinking out loud, throwing the spaghetti against the wall and seeing what sticks. And ultimately, I think what that bears is probably a better product in the end, other than an hour of work session where we're kind of all sitting around looking at each other. Debate is another piece of that. I think if we got to a point where three or so folks were not necessarily agreeing on a subject or a topic, that's when we work with our individual partners on the council, and we spend that time, in the off-time, you know, refining those visions and those goals, coming to consensus and having that civil discourse. And yeah, that takes time. I don't disagree. I don't want to slow anything down, but at the same time, I want to be able to put the appropriate amount of time into certain things. And the budget isn't maybe the best example of subcommittee work, because what Jeff said is finance, not necessarily budget. Budget was one specific task this year that we spent time on, and it had a deadline. I'm looking at more of committee structures as more of that five-year view, that five-year long-term planning view, as opposed to these quick actionable things. So the timing on that, for me, isn't so much deadline-oriented as it is crafting those longer-term goals and getting things kind of aligned correctly. So I'm kind of, I'm both, you know, kind of on the fence with this, to be honest with you, which one's better than the other? And to be, you know, kind of long-winded about it, but I do like the study session format like this tonight. It, you know, it does work for me as well. But I also believe that some of those core areas require that sort of less formal committee structure when it comes down to it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, you want to chime in?
It looked like you were ready to say something. So just to jump in, apologies, I'm just getting back from my chamber appointment this evening. But this is something that I had discussed with Mayor Rogers and City Manager Knighton several months ago, and we kind of backburnered it until we could get to it through some other priorities. And one of the things that I discussed at that time was really the opportunity, as Joe said, to step back and kind of get in the weeds a little bit on things, because I think oftentimes in these meetings, we're looking at decisions that have fairly immediate timelines or are looking at some short-term decision-making. And I think it would be nice if we had essentially in-house experts among the council as well to say if there was a particular program or a strategy that we had folks that we could go and discuss that with and get more information, which in my mind should take some of the burden off of staff if we have the council more educated on some of those things. And I also think there's an opportunity there to then become experts out within the community and speaking on those topics. And I don't think this should take the place of regular business, but I think, to me, it was, in addition to what we're already discussing, some of the things that we're looking at, you know, where do we want to be with this? How do we want to see this program long-term? And so I think that was kind of my thought process on moving to a sort of a committee structure. And then the idea being that we could bring it to the group as a whole and kind of flesh out some ideas and say, you know, don't love this, what about that? So that the staff's not the only one doing some of that work. They can work on their day-to-day, where we're also working with them to look at some long-term goals.
Okay. I'll just add, you know, when I first was elected, I assumed that we would go to some type of committee structure. I think that was my assumption, my thought. And I'm going to say I'm like Joe, that right now I'm on, kind of in-between, depending on what topic we do. I was very concerned, and it maybe is tied to budget, but it could be tied to anything that's getting close to a council decision, that I was communicating with. I feel Jeff's frustration sometimes when he has to communicate to all of us, you know, trying to communicate to Eric and Councilmember Cronz, you know, some of the major things we talked about to get their feedback. And, you know, I know I forgot some. And, you know, it wasn't, there was no intent, it just, you know, I tried to take notes and it happened. And I think from a more strategic standpoint, I think we have to do something in smaller groups for more open discussion, as Councilmember Schmidt mentioned. But if some way magically, when we start closer to an operational, actually, a policy or decision, then I think the committee or that group, whether you call it committee group, needs to bring forward and have a work session on that prior to getting it on the schedule. And how that works, you know, what that fine line is, to me, between talking about something three or four years out, and then all of a sudden thinking that we need to form a policy for this year or next year, that transition is the one that I think would trigger something besides a committee, at least that's my view.
So just to clarify, that I'm hearing correctly, this would, a subcommittee structure would not replace the work session structure that we have now. It would be more of a strategic planning subcommittee rather than delving into issues that are going to come before council in the next three or four months. Is that kind of how it's perceived, or how it's being viewed?
I'll, three or four months is even too short for me.
Right.
Maybe a year.
Yeah.
And I think that's my view. Now, I'm hearing some other council members who really are for the no committees at all. But I'd like to hear from them, if it's more strategic committee, looking at policies long-term or issues long-term, and then when you get close, maybe the next year, we need a policy on X, or we need to do something different on X, then have a work session on it, or some type of committee at the whole. Councilmember Cronz?
Oh, I could throw back in my comments. I just feel that as electeds, each one of us has an opinion that we got elected to express. And when you have a committee studying something or talking out and whatnot with one half of the group doing that, the other, and then they come back with this idea, the other half of the group's kind of coming after the fact. And I just, to me, I just, I think it could, I just feel all opinion needs to be at the beginning and discussed on any of it. So I just don't think we're a big enough city to have a lot of subgroups talking about, because it just, if we don't agree with that, then it's kind of hard, you know, you've got three or months, or six months, or five years for the work, and you kind of say, ah, we don't like it, or we don't think this is good, or we don't, you know. I don't know. To me, and, you know, I just, I kind of go back to the idea that if it's not broken, why try and fix it, you know? And it also keeps us all in the loop right in the beginning, you know? So, I mean, that's just my two cents on it.
I mean, we're having a committee right now with all seven of us. What is wrong with that? Why, if there's a budget committee, it's a study session, or public works, it's a study session, or the budget, it's a study session, or retreats, I guess we used to call them. I just think that putting three of us in a room and making decisions, and then relying on those three to get back the correct information to us when we might have different feelings on those issues is wrong. I think we did have a committee, and we waited months for information on that committee, and then when it came out, some of it wasn't quite right. I think that the way it works now is it's transparent, the press is notified, they can show up, they don't have to show up. I think we sleep with the way it is.
We could fight or something. I mean, we could get boxing gloves or something, you know?
No, this is what this is for.
Yeah, so going back to this, and why I'm also pro-committee, but not anti-
No committee.
Works, no committee, whatever. And Eric, I don't necessarily completely agree with all your points there about feeling left out. You had an opportunity to be part of the budget committee, and you bowed out of that. So, you know, whatever that may be. But at the end of the day, too, the other piece of this is, is if we are working as a group of three, we can, depending on whatever these topics are, because I'm pretty sure that you're not going to have everybody, you know, the way it's going to be split up in some cases, you know, I'm perfectly fine and comfortable with, you know, the way the structure gets laid out, however it gets laid out. But what I think it also will do, and this is something that I can say that we haven't necessarily done, and to Councilmember Cronz's point, if it's not broke, don't fix it, but if it's not working as well as it could be-
Why not fix it?
Why not work on it?
That's a brilliant statement.
So if we can, if we can at least put three of our heads together, and with the staff piece, not every committee meeting is going to require all different components of staff. Sometimes I think a committee meeting could just simply be three council members and the city manager, or just three council members around a table with a cup of coffee, having a discussion and debating on a certain topic. No decisions are made in the committee, by the way. But what that does is it allows a smaller group of people to focus longer-term on all the prongs of an issue, and then bring that back to the larger group. That should be the goal. And if that's not happening, then that's a problem, right, that we need to resolve. So if that wasn't happening with the budget process, you should have spoke up, should have spoke up, and we should have fixed that. And it wasn't always easy getting together and making that work, but those are things that we can work on if we can identify that. I wouldn't say that that ends the opportunity, but that should be something that we can build off of. But I think that's something we owe, we owe the community, the diligence in researching and understanding issues and developing that long-term strategy. We owe that to staff. Instead of spending 15 or 20 minutes on something in a work session and sending it forward, we should be spending a lot more time on that down the road. And that's being pretty critical of the timeframe, so don't hold me to that 20 minutes of thought. But you get what I'm getting at.
And if I may, I think the other component of this, early on, that I had discussed, was that as we moved from the commission, which had three seats with very specific functions and responsibilities, it was very clear who was supposed to be not only keeping tabs on those and getting very detailed information on those, but could speak to those. And I think that in moving to a format where everybody's responsible for everything, no one's responsible for anything. It's kind of like when you ever, having family over, and everyone's watching the kids, so no one's watching the kids, and someone sticks their foot in something they're not supposed to. I mean, it's a simple simplification of what we're talking about here, but really, I think my goal in looking at some sort of a committee structure was to make sure that we had individuals who said, this is mine, and I need to become an expert on it, I need to be able to support staff, I need to be able to explain to the public, I need to be able to report out and get feedback from council members and residents, and then bring it to the whole and say, hey, we're thinking about, and if the council says we're not interested, or we think that needs to go another way, then I think the group can adjust. But I think sometimes it's just to have those conversations about how do we handle X? Why do we look at Y? And I think that in some cases, we've seen cities be very successful with this model. And I think that moving to a council at large, there is sort of a general knowledge that everyone is learning as we go, and I think it gives us an opportunity to choose a couple of things to really become educated about and really focus on. And so maybe not all seven of us need to go to a workshop that AWC is putting on, but maybe the folks in that committee need to become the representatives from the city in that standpoint. So that was the only other point I'd like to make when it comes to the committees.
Thank you. Others?
So I think we want both.
Yeah.
Well, I heard four say no.
I, well, we can't take, can't take a vote in this session. I just wanted to provide the information, and it's a discussion we can continue having. We don't have to make the decision tonight.
This isn't the end.
Yeah. So the consensus, I think, is to stay the way that we are currently, but we can certainly bring this back in city manager briefings and in a future study session as we refine this a little bit more. And one point I wanted to make on the transparency piece is that the committee meetings would be open to the public. All those meetings are open to the public. It's just, the point I was trying to make was that it's, would be more difficult, perceived to be more difficult for people to attend each one of those committee meetings. But it's something that we can continue to refine until the entire council is comfortable with one direction or another.
Okay. A question you might be able to answer this. I've looked at other cities similar to size, and they seem to all have subcommittees. That doesn't say they're functioning, that just says on paper, they have a budget committee, they have a-
Right.
Do you have any, again, not saying that other cities do it this way, we have to do it this way, but do you have any feeling if smaller cities actually have functioning subcommittees, or if they're just kind of paper tigers?
Be careful about how I answer.
I'm not asking about specific cities, Jeff.
So cities that I am familiar with have various committees that meet on an ad hoc basis for specific purposes. The most common one is the budget committee. Just about every city that I am familiar with has a budget committee. The way this is different is it's budget and finance. So you'd be looking at financial policies and all those kind of, different kind of things. Most committees, in my experience, until you get to a city, I don't know, arbitrarily, until you get to a city the size of Olympia or Lacey, the committees generally start strong and then fall apart rather quickly. That's just been my experience, not saying that would happen here. It's just what I've seen.
Okay. And again, I'll ask this question, because you're more familiar with this than I am. There's nothing to preclude two council members requesting to sit down with you or with Craig or whoever to discuss a specific issue and doing some digging or whatever, and come to the council and say, you know, we've looked at this, here's something we might want to consider?
Absolutely not. And I've tried to be very open any time that you want to come by, especially Councilmember Dorsey, because he usually brings me coffee, so, but-
He called me today and said, where are you?
But any time that any council member wants to come by and meet with myself, meet with any of the department heads on any topic, doesn't matter what it is, we are more than willing to do that, and we will make time to do that, when and if it comes up.
I know, I call you at home sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and breakfast, I mean, I tried early on, you know, if somebody needs to meet at 6:00 in the morning, I'll be there. If somebody needs to meet at 8:00 o'clock at night, I'll be there. That's part of the job.
This is our record.
Hopefully not on the same day.
So notice, notice I said 8:00, it's not 9:30.
Not on the same day.
But either one of those is fine. I have no issue with that at any time, meeting with any of the council members on any topic that comes up. Call me anytime, unless I'm asleep, I'll be there.
I say, I get it at 4:00.
Yeah, well, I do, too, so.
I really like going in there. I mean, I swear sometimes they're going to lock that front door on me, because I go, I stop by and visit with him, I don't know, probably three, four times last week. And something was bugging me a little bit, and in fact, I was in there yesterday. And I'm one of those guys that has to think about stuff for a while, and then I go, wait a minute, and then I'll go see Jeff and see what he thinks. So I enjoy doing that.
And like I said, you know, any time.
Or Craig, or Mark, or whoever it is. Sometimes it's just Donna. Sometimes it's just Donna.
Just Donna.
I call them drive, sorry, Donna.
Oh, no.
Well, that's, I mean, she's hardworking, she's the only one that's there all the time.
I mean it that way, but I call them drive-bys, I just drive by and stop in, and ten or fifteen minutes later, I'm out of there.
And I'm, like I said, that's the fun part of the job. I mean, I've been doing this type of work for a long time, and it does tend to happen that you get in a certain mindset, you know? Every, if every problem looks like a nail and all you have is a hammer, that's what you're going to use. So, I enjoy talking with council members about different perspectives that I might not have thought of. I don't have all the best ideas, and I'm more than willing to talk to each and every one of you or any of the citizens about how we can accomplish our job better.
Okay. All right. Everybody happy with where we're ending? And we're ending, we have a new council member coming on board in a couple weeks, and we'll leave it status quo for now, but subject to further review and-
And we can discuss this, even a hybrid type, in city manager briefings, and then bring this back for another work session again in spring, you know, or sometime a little bit, a little bit later in 2020.
Okay.
And you, you realize, you know that in a couple more weeks, our briefings are going to be an hour shorter, because-
Gary's not talking.
Now, see, there you go, I was going to go out-
Nobody's going to do a point of order on that.
I wasn't going to cause any real waves, but Dorsey has-
Point of order.
Start talking about my speaking abilities, just like that.
Always look forward to Thursday morning.
Okay, with nothing else?
Well, that's for the coffee.
All right. Will adjourn.
Feeling better?
I thought he was your friend.